7:04 I'm gonna bring the Dunbarin Board of Selectmen meeting to order. The board of selectmen here today, our town administrator Leo Martell is recording for the public and Lyndon Mickerson will upload those to the town website and YouTube. First thing we have on the agenda is own business, which would be the meeting minutes from last week, right?
Yep.
Motion to accept the October 29 meeting minutes as amended. I second that.
Okay, motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Those are the might to sign. Okay, I'm gonna open up quickly the public comments, see if anything has. Leo, I think we're all set for now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, getting the new town business. Jeff Crosby, our road agent is here and present tonight and he's gonna go over his 2021 budget discussion and also review warrant articles and other options. Cool. Jeff, the floor is yours, I guess go ahead and start.
The budget, I was just looking at, if you look at the total requested, it's 571,498. I was thinking it was 572,480, basically the same thing it was last year, but for some reason I guess my math wasn't wrong.
No, I told you I gave you a new one.
This is the one I just took out of it.
The basket?
Yeah.
Here, I got one that has the correct number on it. You got one too?
Oh, now I got the one, this, yeah, this is out of the basket. I guess there was an extra one that was in there.
Alright.
That solves that problem. You've got it pretty efficient. Just like that, you took care of that problem. Oh, the night goes on. Basically, everything's the same. Within the budget, we moved a couple things like uniforms. We found it, it looks like we're gonna not quite make the total for uniforms because there's been a slight increase shit switching vendors. So just move the money around a little bit, up that to get it to be a little closer. The same with the telephone. It looks like using a thousand dollars, we're at 989 with two more months left, so I up that to 1100, just to bring it in closer.
Yep.
We did expend quite a bit on department equipment and highway maintenance of the trucks and vehicles and I assumed that we'd be well within our budget number because we were gonna get the new truck, but we didn't get the new truck until just recently.
So some of that money was for the old truck?
Yeah, we put some repairs into the old truck and stuff. So I put that back to the 7500, which I feel will be adequate because the new truck should virtually need nothing. So I don't know if you wanna go through every item or you mean it's, you can pretty much see where it is.
If you're keeping your level services and your budget flat, like we've kind of put out, I noticed at our previous meeting, I don't see any need to go through every line. The only, the only thing is, I'm looking here lean on the second line supplies and highway. The budget was 5,000, this year is at 2867, and over and under is 4266.
That's the percent we haven't used.
Correct.
That's left.
Okay.
So I put it back in at 5,000. We have some snowplow cutting edges, we gotta get some other items, so that number will be closer to the five when all those things, that 4266.
Yeah, do you buy them in the fall just before the season?
Yeah, typically, anytime now. And we, for all intents and purposes, have two more, two more months of it.
No, and I think, you know, for departments having to juggle the different areas around where you can see it may need money or doesn't need money, is something that should be looked at every year depending on your budget and what you wanna accomplish, so.
Yeah, and basically our costs have held pretty steady as far as, yeah, yeah, except for wood, we don't buy much of that. But you know what I mean? We haven't had any big increases in any of that.
Ash or alt or anything.
Yeah, everything stayed pretty level, diesel fuel stayed level. I carried the same number that we used last year, because that's a volatile thing. It could, we don't know what's gonna happen.
And your salt's been the same?
No, salt's stayed the same. I think it's exactly the same to the penny of what we bought for last year.
I actually can't believe that those items that we're talking about, those major items that stayed as many as they have.
I, actually, in the spring, I filled up our stock bin there with salt because I was expecting we might have an increase in, well, the whole COVID thing, that was kind of a, no, I didn't know what was going on, and nobody did. But we seem to have weathered that part of it quite well as far as the financial end of it. There are, we haven't seen it with anything we've purchased, but there seems to be a few odd shortages of stuff, but nothing has really affected us. And so that's good.
Just, oh, go ahead, Mike. I'm looking at this year's actual, so you're gonna come in significantly under?
Well, we've got, there's still quite a few outstanding things that'll come out, so we'll probably be pretty close to that.
And you're gonna start your plowing too?
Yes, I'll start our plowing too.
Okay, so that's to be determined.
Yeah, that's to be determined. I would not count on that.
I was hoping.
Yeah, I know.
Are you encumbering any paving?
We may, there's another project, we changed culvert pipes in Footloch Farm this year. They had some metal culverts that were lifted out, and there was one large three-foot one that we didn't, what are you giving me?
Budget.
Okay, thanks.
I made a mistake on one of his numbers.
Oh, you did?
It was the culvert, 150 instead of 1500. So do we wanna leave it where it's the level services and increases budget slightly? The correct number for the bottom line tools?
574 instead of 572.
Yep.
That's fine, it's gonna change too if we do anything with salaries.
Yeah, there's no pay increase in that, those lines, I don't.
So the thing is, it's essentially level services with this, you're doing the right thing.
Yeah, that's the intent.
So you had 15, 150 instead of 150?
I still don't know why these numbers are all, what's, what's the culvers got to do with it?
No, 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 no. See, if you look at the one I just gave you earlier, it says 150, I missed a zero.
Oh.
So it's 1500 instead of 150?
So I made it level based on your other numbers, but when I fix it, it's increased slightly.
Too many fingers in the pot.
Jeff will make up the difference.
So anyway, yeah, the intent was we could operate level funded, that was it.
And are you gonna do your 100,000 warrant article?
Well, that, that's what I wanna talk to you about. I feel, and I don't know if I'll get the support for it, but I feel seriously that we should look into perhaps getting a bond and doing more comprehensive paving, larger amount of paving. In lieu of the 100,000 that we've been asking for to increase our paving budget every year as a warrant article, basically take that money and put it, apply it to a payment for the bond before I'm getting it.
I do. If we use that 100,000 to pay for the bond and we get a bond to do a larger amount of paving, we're looking at probably 4% worth of interest on a bond?
Much, much lower, much lower too.
I'm not sure, I haven't done any research whatsoever.
I thought the school ended up on four.
We're about 2%.
2%.
Or less.
It's in there, the bond bank report.
It's in the second page in the TFA. No, wait, wait, yeah. Just behind you.
I put a note on your own.
Just behind your agenda.
It's not on mine box.
Jeff, just if you did a lot, could you actually do that much work in a year?
Well, it might have to be spread over two years to get the pavement. It would be, there wouldn't be work that we would do, it would be paving, overlaying of the roads, and it might have to be spread out over a two-year period to make it feasible.
That's payroll. The bond bank is in with the mailbox items, and it's an email from the representative that sends me the rates.
Yep.
And her response was the one that I had in my inbox, it was from July 2020, but she's anticipating that the same rate is going to be there for January, but it's not set till January 6.
Look at that five-year bond, point and a half, 0.57%. It's like almost not free money, but.
Pretty much.
Yeah. But you know, when people are adding it to their.
Tax rate.
Their budget here, it's, it's, there's no bond money in there at all, you know, there's no percentage though.
Well, in part, there's a two-part reasoning for that. The first is we are not keeping up with the overlaying of the roads, and we really should. And also, I think as the town as in as a whole has to take a look at the highway department and see how we're gonna evolve with the highway department in the coming years. It's pretty evident that we're gonna have to at least hire another full-time individual at some point in the near future. So we're gonna have expenses from that, more equipment expenses and all that, especially if we hire another employee, then we gotta, we would typically buy him a, not buy him, but that position would have a, another town's snowplow truck to become part of the snowplow services because it's getting harder to get subcontractors to do that. Eventually, we're gonna be forced into having to do it that way anyway. I was just thinking maybe we oughta be forward-thinking and kinda come up with a plan so we could ease into it. And we're not the only part of the town that's gonna feel that. I know Jaws at the fire department's got some issues too with manpower and, you know, having people show up for their calls and stuff, and he has equipment needs as well. So we're gonna be angling with that, you know?
We're at the point, we talked about it last, at our last meeting, the capital improvement program that we have set up and we're gonna wanna try and maybe set up a new task force for that to look at a bunch of people that can, you know, like yourself.
Well, that, that was.
Because we need to schedule something, as you say, over the years coming up, because all these departments are gonna grow. If you wait till the end on all of them.
Yeah, I mean, the capital improvement plan's great, but the deficiency I found was we didn't fund it.
Right.
We put everything on paper and said, this is what we need to do. But you need to put money in a capital reserve fund to fund it, to draw from. So it was kinda, it was an odd setup.
And, and the only eye shot that out of it is, you know, we added the police officers' vehicles, we had one for them, you have your vehicle, fire department has their vehicle one, and Woody has one.
Yeah, so we did it that way.
So there was part of a step, but you're right above and beyond the vehicles, there are other needs that are gonna coverize that capital improvement will need.
Yeah, that's why instead of doing the, putting in the capital improvement plan, we did it per department, for what their need was at the time.
It's funded for equipment, more or less than anything else, so we can evolve into some of the changes you wanna.
Well, I just think we oughta have, it doesn't have to be decided today, either of these items, but the direction, and I know you got budget stuff to work on, but the direction for the highway department really should have some thought put in it and see what, what direction we wanna go as, as a town, I mean.
Let me take a comment from Leo.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I've been a fan of that idea for years, when the other select board was on years ago, of the bond, my question is, do you have an idea what, how much money you would have to bond? I mean, you know, if you, if you does, if you do spread it over two or even three years, you know, the cost of the materials increase so rapidly sometimes, you really still saving money?
Yeah, paying for the bond, really, basically.
Yeah, we've been, fortunately, we haven't had that problem. That's what I was just alluding to earlier, we're lucky the last three years we've had the same amount.
The amount he's talking about is nothing, negligible.
The, one other thing that's gonna play into this a little bit, I believe, and what I've been hearing in the industry a little bit, in the paving side of things, the I-93 widening project is gonna be complete now. So there's some pretty big paving players that have been bidding on that work and getting a lot of work out of it. So they're gonna look for other work and basically, they're gonna take a step down and, and do smaller jobs and beat the brush a little more for jobs. So of course, that's gonna push all the other contractors down a little. So it might be a little more competitive next year.
Right. But I mean, my, I mean, if you, if you, I mean, Jeff, if you spread it out for three years, you're still.
Exactly.
You know, so, so my question again is, do you have an idea of how much?
Yes, that's, that's, same question. A quick number, with today's cost, and I mean, this isn't exact, this is a quick number.
Yeah, yeah, right, I'm not trying to nail you down.
No, I'm just for argument's sake, to give you an idea. A mile of road, 24 feet wide, cost approximately, would cost approximately $100,000 to overlay with an inch and a half of asphalt and do some shoulder work. That's no, no, no major work to it, just maybe clean up the sides a little bit, pave it. That's just a quick number. I mean, so that gives you an idea of about 10 miles. I've got, if we're gonna pursue this, I could come up with a more comprehensive list. Maybe we'll decide it's 12 miles, or 15, or, or eight or something.
You're right, you know where the road that need to be repaired.
Yeah, and can you do something for me, Jeff?
Yes.
Help me out. Maybe take a little bit of time to do this. List down our roads.
Yeah.
List down the miles of them. And then list down which ones, you know, the last maintenance and maybe even what sections were done. I don't wanna get too deep in the comprehensive, like if you did just, you know, some portions of the road, culverts and patched over them. But like, you know, we know Grapevine was all done two years ago or whatever, and, and you know, if you could just give us a list so as selectmen, we could have a, a little bit better percentage.
Some of the ones that are in bad shape need to be reclaimed and, and we have a lot of work done to them. They really aren't gonna change that much in the next year or two, but there's some that are on the brink of getting that bad, whereas if we overlay.
If you overlay, we don't have.
It becomes a kind of a maintenance and we buy some time. It's no lie, this is gonna be an ongoing battle, not battle, ongoing issue between all selectmen's, road agents, everything, just like everywhere else in the state. I mean, for us, we live in New England.
Will you offset your paving, highway paving cost line if you did a bond? Or keep them both?
No, I would, would like to keep that most, because that would help go to rebuilding sections and changing culverts and all that.
And sometimes you, you don't have unanticipated road repairs.
Yes, exactly. But I, I was more in, my thought process was, we've got that 100,000 that we've been appropriating every year and it seems to be pretty successful with the voters, and it's working, don't get me wrong, but I.
It's just not enough.
Yeah, it's not enough. So take that 100,000, instead of appropriating it for that, appropriate it toward making the bond payment, while I'm getting at it.
More bang for your buck. You're getting more bang for your buck.
Yeah, exactly. It's more instant gratification, and that seems to be the big, big thing these days.
Things, now with interest rates low, payment is reasonable.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, that, and then again, I guess I do really seriously think we're gonna have to visit the highway department and how it's operating, and, and I think the residents are gonna demand it too.
So with my new computer, I went from Windows 7 to Windows 10. I had an asset manager program that was used very minimally for tracking the buildings, purchase of properties, equipment, and it showed us a flatline 20-year depreciation. That software's no longer supported with Windows 10. So I personally have been shopping for an asset manager and get, and I've had at least 10 companies contact me. I have two tutorials next Tuesday, one Tuesday, one Wednesday, to look at the program, because there is one that's offered through the BMSI program that works with a module and it might be a little bit cheaper, but I've gotten, I'm looking at some other options, but I guess the understanding, which is a little bit above me, has the ability to track and do more calculations through things like this over a long period of time for a larger project. So I wanna be able to sit down and look at these and then maybe share some of that with Jeff and then report back to the board, because I think it'll be a good tool for him and for other departments, whether it's to be tracking the tires, the oil, the, you know, maintenance.
Well, the stuff I'm talking about basically is a rocket science. We have 45 miles of road we may dig. So I mean, I don't think we have to make it too complicated, you know, and it's just, like Leo says, it's kind of a bit of a no-brainer if you don't. You know, we tend to overthink things a little bit, but.
I just wanna think this through.
Oh, yeah, no.
Long-term, just to make sure this is the year with this COVID stuff going on, you know, a lot of people's pays are getting affected and their taxes.
That's true.
You know, I think they're staying fairly.
As long as it's not in this town, doesn't seem to be affecting.
Right.
Yeah, too much, but it's gonna catch up.
And then, I think it's, we compete with the school too.
Yes.
It's for blinds. And, you know, we, we have been so, shall I say, conservative in our approach to spending. The thing is, I would definitely be in favor of something like this. I think we've taken it.
You're right, Dave. I'll give you that information, that's for no problem.
Yeah, just to, if we could break it down, just so I could wrap my head about it, because you know, at some point, we've gotta approach the voters.
Well, that's what I mean, we gotta be all on the same page. If you guys, you as a board said, hey, we're not gonna do that, you're crazy.
I know, I have had several people that tell me they like the way you do it now. You come, you ask for the additional 100,000, they're used to it now, they know what you're doing with it, and you talk about what you're doing with it, and they kinda like that. Whereas if you did a bond, at some point, you don't have to go back talking, because you got this bond here you're working with, so.
Yeah, but we would, upfront, we'd say we're gonna overlay X number of roads, X number of miles, this is what you're gonna get out of it. And then in the meantime, keep funding it in a traditional way.
You're getting the money upfront, and then you're paying it with the bond.
Yeah. But, no, you're right, Dave, I'll do that, I have no problem. But if you collectively as a board were saying, hey, this is crazy, well, I don't wanna waste my time.
It'd be nice to say, you know, we have 45 miles of road, and we can see that 37 miles out of those 45 or whatever it is, need to be worked on within the town, and we're not gonna get to the end of those until, you know, 20, whatever it is.
Pete has used this argument before in the past, I'm sure you all have. I get up at town meeting, I say we got 45 miles of road, we rebuild a mile every year, it's 45 years till we get back to the beginning. I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
But if you have, if you presented to the, if you presented to the body, you're gonna be presenting the whole plan anyways.
Yes.
So they would see what next year might cost them, and they'll see that, they're getting way more money, I mean, more done for the money, really.
Exactly.
So that's the whole idea.
The environment right now is lucrative, as far as interest rates, material costs, and.
And it's not gonna be such a big bump up in the tax rate at all. I mean, it's gonna be the same as the 100,000.
You're spending it for the number of years you choose the bond, right?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Same as the school.
Spending the money immediately.
But it is gonna be a bump up.
Yes. Well, if we, depends what the interest rate comes in, how much we ask the bond in that 100,000.
Well, just follow me. If we do a bond, and we only take 100,000 a year, we're no better than what we're gonna do with that.
Well, no, why would you?
Oh, that's my question. Do you spend it all now in one year to get 10 miles down?
No, you might spread it over two or three years, but you'd be spending like, say, 300,000 a year as opposed to 100,000 a year. But you might take and spread that payment out over 10 years instead of three years. So that's how a bond works, so your payment can be over 10 years, but you can do the work in three years.
Three, okay.
Okay.
But if you were doing a mile a year, let's say, because it's just even numbers, it's easy to deal with even. If we're doing a mile a year, and you get a bond, and you do 10-year bond, it's the same thing, like Leo said.
Right.
It's the same, only you've been able to purchase your goods at a controlled price in the beginning. At the end of 10 years or 20 years, whenever, you have to revisit these roads, then you gotta fight the bullet again.
It's up again, yeah.
And then who knows, there might be a totally different scenario, climate, you know?
For instance, and just to sort of change the material, when they talked about widening, because I was involved in that group, widening 93.
Yes.
And that was back, 94, 95, we talked about it. It was gonna be a $220 million project. It came in, because they spread it out over this time, it's done sometime this year.
Yes.
For 818 million. That's the difference in the cost of both machine time and.
Materials.
Materials.
And labor and all of that.
Right, and labor, sure.
Fortunately for 93, they get that 80% match from the federal government.
But the price is still up.
But the price is still up.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Yeah, that's what they're running into in the section in Concord right now. They put a preliminary bid out and it came way above their engineers' estimates. So they're going back to the drawing board and revisit to see if they can change the design of it to save some money. And it's basically what you just said, because it, prices have escalated so much since the initial conception of it. But that's really got no effect on what we're doing. We're kinda getting on a tangent.
No, I'm just saying that that's what, that's what you'd look at if you were doing a mile every year.
Yes.
Down to 10 years from now, what you're paying for that mile's gonna be significantly more than you're spending now.
And I mean, in the, in the past, I'll admit it, I was a proponent for, hey, we'll just take what we can do, do it instead of paying interest and all that. But I've come to the realization, seeing what's going on, we're not quite keeping up with it. We are falling behind, and I, for the reasons I suggested, I think it's a good time to do it. You know, is the world gonna come to an end for the town of Dunbar? If we don't do it, no. All these other factors we're talking about are gonna affect the town, but we're still gonna have to maintain our roads. I mean, it's just.
Can you develop, will you be able to develop a plan in time for the town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. The thing is, we're gonna, we're gonna have to.
I have some information all the way together, but I didn't want to formulate it off the.
No, but eventually, we're gonna have to vet that plan in this board here and help you as best we can.
No, I'll give it to you first.
Yeah.
But we'll vent it, we'll look around, but then we'll have to make the decision if this is the year to present it.
Right, exactly. I mean, that's fine. And maybe it isn't, but I was just.
We'll look at it, we'll run the numbers and see if it's something that we presented.
When they get done counting the votes, decide it isn't, I don't know. We'll see, we'll see how that all plays out. But anyway, so that, that's that part of it.
Well, I appreciate you keeping your budgets with level services, that helps us as a select board.
Yeah, there was, there's no thing that stood out that said, we think, because we're getting by with what we have.
Yeah.
Obviously. Alright, the next thing is, as I did tell you, we did take delivery on our new truck.
Yeah.
It's all up and running, we, the body was completed. I did buy some extra things through the body company that we originally contracted, and they were the type of things that we were gonna have to get anyway, like sideboards for the truck, they didn't come with it. Instead of going to the lumberyard, getting them, putting them on, I just had the company do it.
I saw, we already got the bill for it, right?
Yeah, exactly. So we're all done, but it, it was stuff that we were gonna do anyway, and so it was like, alright, we might as well do it now while it's there.
It's a new budget anyway, so.
Yeah, so that's taken care of. The truck is fabulous. Pete's been using it, trying to get used to it and everything. It's a very nice machine, it works well. We'll get the sand a little bit Tuesday due to the.
And for the record, there's been no speeding. I saw the truck travel many day, many times up and down my road, and he's following the speed limit.
It's very comfortable, it seems like it's gonna be very adequate for our things. We're very happy with the product so far, knock on wood.
No, I, they've been using it for about a month now, right?
Yeah, exactly, just about a month.
Do you not let them down Montalone? I've never seen it.
Roads too rough for us.
I told them, stay on the smooth roads.
All these new developments, I'm like, hey, roads.
Yeah, that's exactly it. Now, the other thing is, we've kept the old truck in service. Our plan was to keep it through the winter, because we didn't know, we missed the state auction deal that we could tag into up there. We had to put a few bucks in it. It's, it functions, everything works on it, but we're gonna have to decide what to do with it. I'm, I'm all in favor of keeping it through the winter, spare if we need to have any issues, we'll have it. But we oughta seriously think about maybe selling it, because I'm afraid if it just sits around and doesn't get used, the rust is really gonna cause problems to it and stuff.
What, what do you think ballpark figure we get for, excuse me, that one, would you tell me?
You know, trading it in, we weren't gonna get anything for it, but we might get $10,000 if we sold it. It doesn't have a lot of value, you know, the argument could be, well, it'd have more value for us to keep it, but.
Do you sell it without the plow, Jeff?
Uh, you'd sell it with a package. The plows are pretty well worn out, you know, you wouldn't keep them around in case we need them. We got a new one, we're complete setup. You know, they're all usable, don't get me wrong. A guy like me, they're, would buy that truck and put it to work for the town of Dunbar. But that's a little different scenario.
Is it being used right now?
Uh, it's pretty much parked.
Okay. Are you gonna oil it for the winter, like?
Yeah. Well, we're gonna have it all ready so we can plow, in case we need to, it'll all be fitted up with all the equipment and all that. Yeah, we're gonna spray some oily stuff on it, but still, the rust just, it's 20 years old. And that, you gotta remember, that's why we're getting rid of it.
Absolutely.
Was to, has the issues. So we don't have to have any kind of discussion about that today, but I just wanted to give you an overview of where we're at for that.
I appreciate. Do you know what road should be working on mostly this year coming up?
Well, we kinda fell a little bit behind. We were gonna, the goal was to tear apart Ray Road, but in the event of the COVID situation, there was some talk about, there was a little indication that we might not know exactly how the tax revenues were gonna come in until the first go-round came, and it looked like that was very successful. And so we got a little bit behind, and then by the time I could get the paving contractor in there to do it, it was gonna be late to have him do his part of it and pave it, and I didn't wanna take the chance of going into this time of year and have it all torn up. So we did some overlaying on some other roads, and we're gonna do some widening out of the road and ditch work up there that we can do this time of year, and then if the weather turns bad, we can just stop in preparation for next year. But that's definitely the project for this year.
Is that in-house?
Yes, yeah. So that, that's the goal of that. So like I said, we upgraded the culverts at Footloch Farm. We have one in there, it was pretty significant. It's rusted out, but the integrity of the pipe is still there. And I reached out to a lining, relining company to see the feasibility of relining it. Escavation-wise, it would be a pretty substantial project, which would. Escavation wise, it would be a pretty substantial project, which would run the tab up. We could do it, but it's about twelve feet deep. So it's a pretty big project to do it and the cost to do that, probably just a, a quick number between materials, pipe, labor and all that, could be fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars. So I'm gonna see, it's a good opportunity to maybe have that one re-lined and not tear it over. The culverts that are shallow and smaller, I looked into it before and it was just as cheap for us to dig them up. But this one might go the other way.
And it's a three footer?
It's a three foot diameter and it's about a hundred feet long.
Wow, that's in Foot and Lock?
Yes.
Wow.
And it's, uh.
Must be one of the turnarounds or something.
No, it's, it's on Birchview actually. And it's a drains a marsh underneath the road. And it was at the time, the town was allowing metal pipes and nobody knew at the time. They thought it was fine, but the water, the acid and water just eats the pipe. And we replaced everything with concrete, just like our specs and that's.
When they line it, would be concrete or just a metal?
They have this plastic material and it's, it folds up and there's a certain length that is hooked together. There's a certain length that, length that you'd have to put in a thirty-six inch pipe. And then they actually heat it up and it expands.
Is it?
And it warms to the inside of the pipe. It's a very effective way of doing it.
More than fifty percent off?
I'm not sure.
Okay, researching it now.
Yeah, I reached out to the company. They're gonna give me a price.
Okay.
On what it would cost to do that. There's another alternative they call snap tight, which is basically inserting another pipe inside it and then you grow it around it. That's, there's only like really two options. This eastern pipe lining over Bo does the original one I told about, company out of Maine does the snap tight. And a lot of towns were using that, but they seem to kinda got away from it cuz it's pretty costly. You're still gonna buy the pipe and install it. And it's nothing we can do in-house.
Right.
It has to be subcontract.
So here, lots of snow, I guess, on that.
So, yeah, that's, that's it. All right. Last item. My, my snowplow. I wanna talk about snowplowing. I, uh. I've got Bill Nichols, Wayne Nichols, myself, Pete, of course, for the town, and Jackson as the town floater comes in on as needed basis. And John Wigan. I haven't heard from Nate on whether he got his license and all. I don't believe he has. I just assume forego trying to get involved in this year till it gets that all straightened out. I mean, we operated for two years, almost two years with the license, lack of license. Last year I was able to ride with someone that had a license and I just feel it's become problematic. We're all set for manpower this year, so I just.
Now, will Jackson use the one ton or use the?
Typically uses the one ton.
Yeah.
Yeah, to plow the smaller areas.
And you run, you run a plow truck too, Jeff?
Yes, I run my own plow truck. We were doing that last year too and, and I had Nate on hoping he would, you know, get him in the system, learn the whole routine, everything we did and work with us and all that. But like I said, this whole license deal is.
Has he approached you at all?
No, I haven't heard a word from him. So I don't know where he's at. I'm gonna hunt him down for sure, but I wanted to tell you what my plan was and kinda get you, get you a blessing.
That's a wise thing to do before we run into a liability issue.
Well, I, I mean, yeah, exactly.
He's already rolled a truck over on accident and.
Yeah, enough said. I mean, it was, it was supposed to be a temporary situation. I don't know.
Well, I agree. Maybe he's got it. So we just reach out when he reaches out to you and vice versa? Let's go, make a decision. You're to be sure just.
Yeah, that's all I just wanted to.
Yep.
Keep you impressed with that.
I think I would support you. I think you would make the wisest decision.
Yeah, it's not that I don't want him involved in the system. It's just that's, the rest of us have to have commercial licenses. It's a requirement. We've been pretty flexible and went the other way for the whole season and I haven't seen any progress or heard any progress.
Oh, we can think often, hopefully, but if it doesn't happen, such is life.
Yeah, I'm not saying there's no road for him, but we just, you know, we, we got all the bases covered. Having said that, I wanna implement a program with my snowplow operators. It's a similar program that the state does. The town of Hockington does it and the town in Boston does it. The rest of the surrounding towns that border us don't rely on subcontractors at all. And what it is, is basically a five-hour stipend per week, even if they don't go out plowing. If you understand what I'm getting at with that. Let's say it was enacted next week and we had no snowstorms, no slippery weather. They would still get five hours pay, which would be five times eighty-five. Following? And they would get that pay automatically. If we did go out, that would go away and they would get their, whatever time they went out for. Lines it was over five hours. If it was only four hours, they'd get four hours sanding, plowing time and one hour stipend. But once, they wouldn't get both if you follow what I'm getting at. What I would do would be, I guess, have the, the period cover of twenty weeks. Basically would start the fifteenth of November and this year, the way the calendar is, it'd be the fifteenth of November to the third of April.
Did that affect four of them?
E, myself, Bill, Wayne and John Wigan, yes.
Four.
Four.
Like, can you do four?
It's eighty-five hundred dollars. Eighty-five hundred dollars per big truck, twenty weeks, eighty-five dollars.
Eighty-five times five, times twenty, times four.
Eighty-five times twenty, times four, sixty-eight hundred, seven per hour.
Looks like to me that if it's a similar year to last year, you have enough in your budget to cover it.
Well, that's just the rest of this year, but don't rem, you gotta, can't lose track of it. They don't get that no matter what. They get it if they don't go out. But if they go out, we're gonna pay them anyway. Follow what I'm getting at?
Right, so worst case scenario.
If they didn't go out at all over twenty weeks, they'd get eighty-five hundred dollars.
And so most likely, half that time, you're gonna be going out.
Oh, or more. Last year, we started in November. We had some bad weather. And then in February, we had like a two-week dry period. We didn't do anything in two weeks. Then it picked back up and actually it kinda shut off in the first part of March last year, just about the time of the COVID situation. So I, we're gonna, I feel that we need to do that in the future as well to attract subcontractors. Cuz it's just not.
I could tell you, that's a lot cheaper method. You know, if you look at the winter maintenance contractors, you've got eighty-five thousand in that line.
Yes.
And this year we've done fifty-five thousand. We are coming into winter again, but eighty-five thousand, you can't even purchase a single truck for that amount of money.
We paid a hundred and eighty thousand for one wheel.
Right.
All ready to go. Then we have, then we have to put a driver. I mean, I think. While we are utilizing subcontractors.
Can we make a decision on that next week?
Sure.
Not this week, but could you be tried next week and give us some thought about it?
But I just, yeah, I will, but I just don't get confused, get the blinders on and think it's eighty-five hundred dollars plus whatever they made.
No, 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 that's, that's if they're sitting around and do nothing. That's not keeping their vehicle ready to go.
Well, yeah, cuz the vehicle, and obviously the vehicle would have to be ready to go and all that and.
Exactly.
You know, proper registration is whatever.
That's four hundred and twenty-five a week if you pay all four guys.
For a guy.
A week.
John.
Oh, yeah, and you're talking possibly ten weeks, so it's forty-two hundred.
Well, he said he wanted an effective twenty.
Twenty weeks, but you gotta understand.
Some of those weeks will be working.
Yeah, over the twenty weeks.
Typically, they're gonna be working at least. I think they'll probably, you might run into it cuz quite often we have very little precipitation in November and December. But after Christmas usually sells it.
And it's gone all over the place. I mean. Can you just run by me one more time the, the numbers you proposed?
Five hours a week.
Five hours a week.
For twenty weeks.
Three trucks, three, three subcontractors.
Three subs, okay.
Would be getting eighty-five dollars per hour. So that's fifteen times eighty-five.
Okay.
For a week. And then John Wigan, who plows with his one ton, will just plow, gets fifty-five dollars an hour. So he would be at a different.
Okay.
So that, that includes the four.
I, I, Dave, I think we, a decision should be made quickly because we're entering snow.
Yeah.
Maximum twenty weeks, Mike, but you gotta understand, like he says, it's in the prime of the snow season. And I know that even just doing the small plowing I did, I plowed ten or twelve times a year, you know, doing a small amount of plowing. I went to the town, so.
To me, I think it gives an insurance policy to at least to the, to the individual contractor that his truck's gonna be ready.
My guys have been bugging me for several years about this and I'm kinda just putting.
If we look, we look at that, just that one line out of this town is so fortunate to have those subcontractors plowing. We could never afford to buy the trucks and equipment and people.
And those, you have enough in your line. Could you cover this, this remaining up in this calendar year?
I'm on an email look for, on his behalf, and everyone's asking for subs. They don't have, they, they don't have. They're saying if anyone has any spares, can you send them my way? And they're all like.
You're dealing with two budget years too.
Yes, exactly.
You've got eight weeks, eight weeks, almost nine weeks this year and then the other weeks.
So, yeah, that was twenty-five or something. I got it in front.
When were you thinking to start?
I was hoping to implement it the week of November fifteenth and then it would go through April third, which is the first three days of April. Is what I'd like to do and that's.
I don't have any issue with it right now.
That, that seems to parallel with what the state.
I don't know if you guys would like to think about it a week, but he wants to do it November fifteenth. So what are we at now?
Today is the fifth.
Yeah.
We got another week.
If you wanna meet next week, we can meet. I, I have no problem with it.
Okay.
That's fine. Think about it. I appreciate it.
No, I, I think it would give almost them an incentive, I mean, a small assurance that they're gonna be able to pay their vehicle expenses.
Well, if we. Cuz that's always, that's been the big complaint with them when they aren't doing anything. They get kinda anxious about it and it's like, there is an investment. Granted, they're not, you know, the hundred and eighty thousand.
I remember Nate saying last year, you know, I got my truck already and now the snow stopped.
Yeah.
You know?
It happens.
You know, it's frustrating.
I mean, it averages out over the course of the year, so I don't really think we're gonna be paying, I mean, a lot of people look at it as paying somebody for doing nothing. But I don't think that's gonna really play out that way cuz that would be a very unusual year. And if it was that much of an unusual year, year, they'd really need it cuz they invested in all their insurances.
Anybody's done plowing, they know how anxious it is. You're staying up nights, waiting for it.
So those are the items that I wanted to talk about. I know it's quite a bit of information. I'm glad you didn't have anybody waiting to come in behind me. Am I the only guy in the barrel tonight?
You're the only guy in the barrel. First pitch in.
Well, Lee told me, she said, if you can come in tomorrow night, it'd be great or this weekend.
If you gobble all the money, all the, not the money, put the water in the barrel, nobody's gonna have any.
But, but, exactly.
No, but you do have some interesting things. You're adding new, so it's such a routine issue. So I'm glad you brought it in early.
Yeah, and I just, again, I think we got three big items we wanna talk about, but.
And whether the bonding thing works or doesn't work this year, it's a good thing to get.
To talk about.
In the mindset and talk about it because we could even start talking to the public about it, even if we don't implement it.
Oh, for the next, for the meeting, we asked for the hundred thousand. We say, we're thinking about, you know.
I, I really think economically it's gonna be a good year to do it, but I mean, that's just a gut feeling. I don't, I base that on basically the interest rates are low. That's it. And inflation isn't really kicking in yet. It probably will. I'm thinking at some point after we get out of this issue here and everything settles down. But, and then we, and we can't lose track of it. We gotta, I think we really oughta collectively think about a direction for, from what the town wants to, how they wanna see this evolve.
I think that'll be, uh.
But that doesn't have to be decided now, but we gotta keep that in the back of our mind that we should really.
Just a silly question, but I think, so let's say you have two full-time employees. How would the second employee plow?
Well, that's what I mean. We'd have to purchase a vehicle basically.
Right.
To, that's the issue when you, the more employees you have, then you gotta give them the tools to work with. That's what I mean. We'll be kinda crossing into a whole different scenario. Right now, being elected road agent, I supply a lot of those pieces of equipment on a per-hour basis, as you know, and they only pay for them when they're being used. And if you had two guys, you're like, well, these, you know, we should buy a backhoe because then Joe and Pete can go out and do ditch work and do this and that to keep them busy and give them something to do. We really need them just in the winter the most cuz that's the go time and the fact that it's a hard time, hard to get subcontractors work. But you gotta do something the rest of the year. So then the town or a town decides to purchase a piece of equipment. Wait, I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
No, no, no.
But that's where you're gonna be spending more money.
Right.
And then you gotta salary for benefits and all that and you gotta snow out.
But eventually, eventually we have to cross the bridge. I mean.
Yeah.
Whether it's rush coming into the edge of the road.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you can only keep up with so much with a limited department, so.
We've been pretty fortunate. Our employee is the type of employee that can work by himself. Some employees cannot work by themselves. It's not that they, they just cannot do things by themselves. They need help or company even.
Yes.
And from a safety aspect, it's safer to have somebody out there. They're working on the side of the road with traffic and cars and, you know, that whole aspect of it. And we've been fortunate because we've been able to pick up some part-time help over the years for the, the summer period of time to help out with that. And that's worked well. I don't have any problem with it. But I think at some point, the town's gonna look to maybe go over to the next level. And I think we ought to start that discussion. You're never gonna get away from it. You still, you know, you might have two full-time employees and then you're still hiring a part-time individual in the summer.
Right. Okay, well, thanks for coming in, Jeff, and giving us this information and we'll bounce those numbers around.
Yeah.
For the five hour.
Yeah.
Do you have something else?
Well, I was just wondering, would you like to make a motion to implement this and then review it in mid-April as to how it worked this winter?
I don't have any problem with that either, so.
You know, this way here, you'll have an assessment of how it worked out this winter. Cuz you know, the other thing too is, somebody's got a plow truck and it, something breaks down on it. And they're spending money that they don't really have to throw at the truck.
Yeah.
To get it back in operation.
Yeah, that's been the, that's been the argument over the years cuz it does cost a certain amount of money. And like I said, I don't, the drag, this is not any longer a beat the horse anymore. Hockington does it. They rely on subcontractors. New Boston does it. The state, Bo, Ware, Bostown don't rely on subcontractors.
And you're in that, at the point now where it doesn't have to be snow cuz there may be outstanding.
Yes.
Because the roads, if, if you get rain, you know, the last few winters, we had more rain and freezing rain. It's gonna get snow.
So typically they get the time in, but there are some dry periods.
Thanks, Lee. You have something?
Yeah, from the accounting standpoint, you would pay for, at the end of the week for the, the week behind you, correct? If there was no activity. And then.
Yes.
Could we get them to give us an invoice? Because.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's critical that.
Oh, definitely.
There's gotta be some mechanism that how am I gonna be able to track? And you're approving those.
Oh, yeah, no, I would anticipate, let's say we started, let's, just for arguments, we started the week of November fifteenth. There's no plowing. They turn a bill in the following week.
By the end, yeah, okay.
The twenty-second, twenty-third, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would approve it and you'd pay it.
Yeah.
Second payroll. Yep. Not spread out over two or three weeks, so we'd all have the handle on it. They know exactly, so it wouldn't get convoluted all of the time.
Yes.
And if, if, I think that would be the way to do it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Cuz otherwise you would never be able to keep track.
Well, it would be hard to track on all ends, your end, their end, my end.
We had the same problem with one of our subs. He didn't provide us an invoice for like.
A month.
A month and a half. And it was like, by the time we came back, he was.
Bit of an argument to get it straightened out, but.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that, that definitely, you're right. It would be, we'd have to come up with a system and I'm thinking that would work.
So bringing it back to the board, Mike, Bob has made a suggestion. What's your thought?
You know, to me, the roads are so important. People gotta get to work. I, I think this is just, it cements a, a town service.
Yeah.
It puts.
And it, it shows that we're committed with these.
That being said, I'll make a motion that we implement the five hours per week for a twenty-week period of time, starting on November fifteenth and ending twenty weeks after that.
Which is.
April third.
April third.
Lee, could you come up with a, work with Jeff to help with the one-page policy and how that would be limited?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should have. I'm making the motion still.
Okay.
And that will be reviewed at the end of that period just to see how it worked with the road agent and the board of selection.
Can we include the rate of, of the stipend per hour?
The stipend per hour on the larger vehicle would be eighty-five dollars per hour and on the one-ton vehicle will be fifty-five dollars per hour.
For maximum of five hours per week.
Yeah. So that's the motion.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. Motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
No discussion now.
Oh, you would like to discuss again?
Just, I think we should have a written policy in, in place.
Yep.
I think, uh, uh, in addition to the written policy, I think it's firm guidelines, so we can't wait six weeks for an invoice to come in.
Oh, no.
In other words, if they don't get the invoice in, it's forfeited.
Yeah, we usually don't have a big problem with that. That was kind of an unusual circumstance.
And the other thing is, um, as per your recommendation, they only work one hour plowing or sanding, they get paid for the additional four hours. It's, it's a total of five hours less, how much they do on the road.
If we have to go out and do like a sanding of all our, it takes about four hours.
So that should be worded.
So we're really close.
That's what I would like to have worded the policy, just so there's no questions on it. And so there's, they're not coming back, Jeff, but you said verbally, and then it's gonna be in writing.
They all understand it would be like five hours plus four hours, cause they went outstanding a total of nine, it's.
And the thing is, and I'm not gonna nickel and dime someone for fifteen minutes, I mean.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 I understand that, but it's not.
Okay, that was my discussion. I, I'm happy where we're going.
Okay, we can amend that.
No, it doesn't mean amend it, it's just, it's part of the implementation.
I, I think if you want to read the policy that's drafted up in word, word for word.
So motion stands. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll let Lean get that policy squared away with Jeff and have the proper wording in there.
Yeah, she was looking for one more thing to do. We can keep it simple, though.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be too complicated.
Correct.
All right, I guess that's all I got. Thanks for entertaining me.
Thank you for being proactive about that.
Yeah.
And moving forward in the future years.
All right, bye.
Thank you, Jeff.
Outstandingly. See ya.
Thank you. Okay. Put that bond rate over here. Okay, so Jeff has done talking about the budget and his warrant articles. Uh, we're gonna go on, we have some monies to accept. And two of the checks we get, and we just received today late, and another one was received earlier. I have copies of them all right here. Do I have a copy of the sixty-dollar one?
The sixty dollars in cash that was received yesterday from Dylan Larson.
All right, I'd like to make a motion per hour, say thirty-one, colon ninety-five dash B, roman numeral three, paragraph B to accept sixty dollars from the fundraising for WAD. We're gonna do them separately, okay? Motion's been made?
Second.
Bob, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next one, I'll make a motion per hour, say thirty-one, colon ninety-five dash B, roman numeral three, paragraph B to accept five thousand dollars. And that five thousand dollars is for the Center of Technology and Civic Life.
Correct, and that's.
It's a COVID response grant.
For elections.
For elections. Motion been made?
Discussion.
Uh, after you second it?
I second that.
Motion been made, seconded, discussion?
I just wanna make sure where the monies are headed. Is it going to our general, uh, general fund? Because we've already expended some of the money towards its expenses.
And all of these grants that come in always go into the general fund, but you should be aware that in order to apply for those grants, there have been operating budget expenses that have been paid in advance. And this is to reimburse them.
You're gonna give us a breakdown.
I will give you a detailed.
I just wanna be sure that this is not promised to any particular department.
That's correct, no.
Okay, motion's been made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the last one, I'll make a motion per hour, say thirty-one, colon ninety-five dash B, roman numeral three, paragraph B to accept twenty-three fifty-seven ninety-five uh, from the Election Cares Act for postage.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded?
And again, I wanna reassure, this is again going to the general fund.
Correct.
Yep, and this postage has already been taken out anyway, so.
Well, I just wanna be sure it's not going to like any department.
Yep.
Well, the example of the postages, we may be paying sixty-five cents to a dollar, something, a dollar fifty. But what the, uh, grant, uh, converted to was twelve dollars per, after the balance. So, we did recoup what our labor involved, you know, to get this, um.
Okay.
So it's.
Now, do you guys pull their back, cause the actual checks attached?
Yeah, no, that's just the stub I put in my reconciling book.
Okay, there's still a motion on the table.
Motion been made and seconded now, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that takes care of those.
Thank you, Lean.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we get those on the agenda, and it was late, so that's good. I don't have this item on this agenda, but.
Which item is that?
Uh, the pay increases, were you gonna speak about that?
Well, no, you had asked me to get you that information, you don't need to, and all of you have one in your packet. You can review it. Um, that was one stipulation Bob said he was waiting for, uh, cost of living report.
So I asked Lean when I was in signing this week to give us a total for all of the departments, whether it was a one percent, two percent, or three percent raise, so that we could look at a dollar figure. Okay, Bob? So, um, I thought it would be helpful, cause we never really pull out and look at a dollar figure, so I wanna know what kind of money we were talking about.
So what I based that on was the accounts that are within the system. I deleted everything except for the payroll lines that were approved in, for the twenty-twenty budget, how I came up with my total, and then I calculated the one percent, two percent, three percent.
So this is more, um, a worksheet, so you guys can work on it, and we can talk about it at another meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, now we'll go into mailbox items. And I'll keep the budget in here.
You should have a folder that has your, your money.
Budget meetings right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The next thing in the mailbox item, Lean has finalized our tax rate, um, for this coming year, and the tax rate is gonna be twenty-two point twenty-eight per thousand. And, uh, she worked this out with all the agencies and accountants and got it all squared away. And another important amount here, the current amount retained is four point three-three, and our rainy day found of four forty-two one oh four to start this budget season, so we can keep that in the back of our mind when we get closer as well.
And she did point out that she would like the municipalities to maintain the minimum of five percent.
Yep.
And keep that in the back of your mind.
So, um, you know, I like the way this tax rate ended up, and when you do the, uh, dollar values off your tax card, you can figure out now exactly what it will cost you on your tax bill.
So I did do a quick overview of a lot of the properties throughout town, um, and what I found was the, for the majority, a high increase, might have been four hundred dollars, but there were people that were in the two hundred dollar increase range, and there were a few properties that had a decrease as well, so.
Yeah, I was thinking a four hundred thousand dollar house was gonna have an increase between eight, nine hundred, somewhere like that, a thousand dollars, and, uh, this is much lower than I expected, so.
I got mine yesterday, and it's lower.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The value went up.
Yeah.
What you're talking.
Yeah.
But the cost is lower. It'll buy about fifty dollars, but lower.
Right, it, right. It wasn't a lot, but it's still less or equal to what you paid in July.
That's okay.
Which, you know, by keeping everything as, as level as we have, it's really helped maintain that, and also, um, you know, I've talked to the school a little bit, and they, they're gonna try and do level budget as best as they can as well, probably without their, without their increases of pay, but the rest of it will be level.
I could commend the town administrative side for, for how fast it got out. I mean, it was in the mail quickly. It was only approved last Friday, I believe.
Yeah, the final official, yeah, we were printing and merging and, um, it was a lot of work.
Kudos to all the American people working on this.
And Judy, I have to thank Judy, she really, um, put in a lot of hours, and she was willing to do that, because she, the later we, we have to by law give the taxpayer thirty days to pay their taxes, and the later it gets out to the mail, the later it is due in December, and we have a, uh, over a million dollar county tax that we have to pay by December fifteenth. So, this could impact what we have, um.
Well, it looks like everyone will have to do it by the first week in December then.
Correct, yeah.
Good, thank you.
December third, yeah.
The next thing I have in this mailbox item, Linda had come to us about storing election items and, uh, a container, and she had a company here local that was used or new containers that had some connections, and nobody had any. When I was at the, um, at the election, I asked Woody to look into it, um, online to see if he could find some, and I think Mike has some backup on that for us.
Woody has, our, contacted two companies, they've gotten back to him. One has already given a quote for a new item and a used item. Both of them have a five-year warranty. He's got another one, another one on Facebook, he's gotta print out the quote. He's passed them to Lean to keep them on, on file. He should have, looking for a third, and we can make a decision, uh, probably as soon as we get the third.
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's moved out smartly on this.
So that's good, and I think we've all talked about keeping it down at the transfer station, because they're the people moving it.
Yeah, makes sense.
It's the best spot to keep it. He has plenty of room down there, and, uh, all this stuff will be in a airtight container that won't, uh, have animals eating.
That's a work in progress. He's, he should have some by next week, he thinks.
Okay, thanks for the update on that.
Is that the, the bond bank?
Yeah, looks like, uh, we have an update from the bond bank on the municipal bonds.
So what I had looked into, because I, Jeff had mentioned that he would probably be pursuing this or approaching you about it. Then I reached out to the National Bond Bank, um, contact person.
I'll probably put that in his.
She said that, um, the new race won't be out till January sixth. But she anticipates it's gonna be long.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why it makes sense to hit, why it fires hot, lower interest rates. One, less than one percent.
Is that the lighting quote?
Looks like you have a lighting quote here from Woody for floodlights.
Yeah, we're gonna hold on to that, because he's got two more pending to, for you to review and consider as well.
All right. And then we have a Lean form from the Dunbar Police Department for community partnerships.
These changes in report formatting.
Yeah.
And the one that you get electronically every month, and this is more like a newsletter, a little bit lengthier, but.
It's got a lot of information about touch truck and a bunch of other stuff, so that's nice piece of paperwork, and he's gonna produce this every month?
Yeah.
You can see, it looks nice online, it's a lot of, a lot of colors.
A lot of colors, yeah.
Nice. Whoa, we got some vacation time coming up, it looks like.
Yeah, I will be putting out a memo to the departments, reminding them that we're coming up to the end of the year, and that it's important that they either come before the board to let, to inform you that there's, um, X amount of hours that they don't feel that they can use up by the end of the year, because we do have to pay them for that, or they lose it.
Okay, so I've signed those, those are all set to go, and that looks like all of our mailbox items. Open it back up for a, uh, public comment, Leo?
Nope, I'll say thank you.
Okay, there are no non-publics, so do I have a motion on the table?
No, I think you're gonna go around.
Oh, yeah. Lean, do you have anything for the board?
Uh, I discussed that with Jeff, so I, I think hopefully it's gonna get taken care of.
All right.
I just wanna make one more final comment on the election. It was a good team effort by all town officials.
Yeah.
And it was, uh, well, I thought the public, uh, really supported the efforts to social distance, mask on. No one, I don't recall anyone being turned away at all. Everyone had an opportunity to vote, so thumbs up, and I, I salute the moderator for doing a great job.
Very good lecture.
Can we just also comment on the fact that there were, what, forty-six, forty-seven volunteers for Ballack County?
Yeah.
I was very impressed, it was my first time, and I was, and I dragged my husband in there, and we both enjoyed the experience. It was very well managed, uh, the system worked extremely well. And I, I'm glad there were that many people, because it could have been a really late night for you guys.
People aren't here, we got out of there at about one-thirty after signing the filing forms and, uh, headed home, so it was a long day, but, yeah, we wanna thank the town clerk, the town moderator.
And Joe Milliotta, who really has got the process down, he, he basically has a moderator stay out of his way, and he makes the county, makes the comp go really well. Kudos to Joe Milliotta.
Even during the day, working the books, he's a huge resource.
I got online early in the morning, and Linda had already posted the results.
Yeah.
Yeah, two-thirty or two.
Two o'clock, I think she said. Well, yeah, she got out of here, right. So it was already on early in the morning. I was surprised, it was good.
Yeah, so it went very, very well, and, uh, all the help there picking up everything, and also would like to thank the transfer station and the employees that helped set up and break down. Uh, even though we pay it for it, it's odd hours to be working. It's after hours, so it was very helpful. Okay, anything else, Mike?
I'm good to go.
All right, I have nothing further for the board?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
At eight, ten?
Second.